Welcome to another Town Hall. Appreciate you being here. Those that are night shift, coming off, thank you for the night that you just put in and then staying over. And those that are starting their day, thanks for starting your day off with us. This is hopefully, again, going to be just informative. When we send out the invitations to these, we really are interested in any feedback that you would like to cover. I'm going to tell you that we received no one's topics for this one, so we're throwing it out there. And if there's something that we have not covered, or that you've just got a question about, please, you know, bring it up at the end with the question and answer, or you can interrupt any of us. Because these are your meetings, they're not ours. We're here talking to you about what we think that you want to hear about. If we're wrong, let us know, okay? As far as updates for me, I think the, I want to start with an exciting one. I think it's exciting. I hope you'll find it exciting. We talked before about a family and child development center. Less family, more child. And so I talked to you about being able to open up a six-week to five-and-a-half-year-old true child development center modeled after the Goddard School. And it was, it's also part of the, it's the exact same curriculum that Vanderbilt uses within their schools, their childhood development centers. We actually worked with them. We pulled architectural designs for their school. They provided them to us. We have, here's their hiring, here's what you have to do. You have to have a language specialist, and a speech specialist, and a curriculum specialist, and all these other kinds of things. And so, we were able to package all that up. We went, worked with some architecture, got all of that designed, pitched it to Robertson County Trust just two weeks ago. The total cost of this, plus the first year operating expenses, is going to be about $3 million. They agreed to come in for $1.1 million on that. We are also pitching that to the Stokes Brown Fund for the other $1.1 million. And in talking with the Northcrest Foundation, they've said they would be willing to take on a capital campaign to fix, to do the rest. So, in all seriousness, the first year operating expenses, it'd be nice to have that money sitting in the bank for that, just in case. But actually, the first year operating expenses are going to be covered a large portion by tuition. So, we don't have to have the full $3 million, but we do need about 2.2 before we, you know, really open it up. But that would have 120 slots for, again, children between the ages of six weeks to five-and-a-half years. And, again, following the exact same way that Vanderbilt does it, during inclement weather, it opens up into a childcare center, not necessarily a child development center, so that we could make sure that we're able to take care of your children during inclement weather, so that you can come here. So, we're excited about that. I'm excited about that. I know that I'm only halfway there, but what that means for the $1.1 million that Robertson County Trust gave us, is I can go ahead and knock this little log cabin building-looking thing that used to be the education building, I could finally knock that down. We can finally grade that area and get it what's called pad-ready. We can go ahead and lay it out, so that you can have a little bit better of an idea for that. And I can go and actually pay the architect to finish the different drawings that they've done, and really be able to get into the design of it, look at the different furniture that you have to build, because apparently, you can't sleep on sleep mats anymore. You have to be three inches off the ground in these little elevated little beds. I didn't know that. I don't know why. But, you know, so there's a whole lot of things that we've got to get into from the furniture standpoint, that is completely different than when I remember sleeping on my nap mat in my little, it was actually church-related daycare. So, I hope you find that great. We do. So, I would say that from a capital-raising standpoint, we're halfway there. Because once we hit the 2.2 million, that builds the building. Then the rest of the money is just operating the building. And so, what we would also, would be able to do, is talk to you all about, you know, how, and we can model it after kind of the YMCA does, from a salary-based tuition, so that we can help you. I mean, it is a Northcrest childhood development center, so we can make sure that everyone can afford it, that you can send your children there. Because if you do a little bit of quick research, you can find out the RAND survey, it's all capital letters, R-A-N-D. If you pull the RAND survey about childhood development centers, you will see that they've done a 20-year study on children that have come out of that. And you talk about achievement levels. Children that come out of a true childhood development center are set up for great success going forward. We want that for y'all. We believe that you've got to build your own community, and in that, you do it with your children. I mean, I do it with mine. Why was I waiting on the bus for them, right? It's because you care. And because I knew he hadn't done his homework last night, and I needed to finish it with him. But, you know, so there's, so those are what we're working for, for there. Outside of that, that's the, that's the big thing. Also want to let you know that there are, there are a lot of people that are looking at what y'all have done. Y'all have done a really, really, really good thing. You've accomplished two things that have been, that are said in healthcare that you cannot do. One is make money in the new healthcare system. And the other is maintain quality. They say that you can't do that hand-in-hand. That if you cut expenses to where you need to, in an organization to survive in the current healthcare landscape, that you cannot have enough money left in your hospital to maintain quality-based programs. And so, there's a lot of people saying that these quality pursuits are actually bankrupting hospitals. Well, you know what y'all have done? You've maintained that you're one of the top hospitals in the nation in terms of your quality performance, and what you're doing in terms of patient care delivery, and how you're doing it. You're doing it exceptionally well. And the other thing that y'all have done, is you've turned this hospital around financially. You have a reputation now, that we're actually struggling handling all the volumes. Y'all feel the struggle with the volumes, right? So you know that there's staffing crunches that are around, trying to make sure that all these patients that are coming through have the right ratios, so that we can make sure that we maintain our quality. It's stressing even from our provider standpoint, when we're talking about hospitalist coverage within the hospital, right? How can you make sure that you have enough providers in-house, so that you can cover the patients? These are good problems to have. What it means is the reputation of this hospital is drawing people from a long way away. And it also drives a different conversation, which is, okay, I really appreciate that you love us, but the fact that you've been suffering a heart attack or stroke symptom for the last hour before you decided to get in your car, and then you drove an hour and a half to get to us, I would suggest that you stop at another emergency department on your way. But, you know, there's, we appreciate that people put that much faith in us. There is some patient education piece on the back end of that, by the way. And that's what we have to do. We have to go educate the community about what they really should and should not do, and when you should make that drive to go all the way over to Northcrest. But those are good things. And because we are being, I don't know, set up as a example of a hospital that can do it, an independent, standalone, not-for-profit hospital, actually hitting their quality goals and being financially viable, we're a unicorn. So, there's some people that have been trying to do that, been trying to get that thing figured out, and they've not been able to. There's smaller hospitals than us. And one of them is in Houston County, in Eron, Tennessee. Conveniently, it's about 10 minutes from Angie's house. They have come to us, and they've said, we don't know if it was lightning in a bottle, we don't know if that, what happened at Northcrest was just this compilation of wonderful things, and just fertile ground, and good people, and so it just took off and was able to go, or is it something that can be replicated? But they have said that they're going to have to close. Their budget committee met, they're county-owned, county commission met, and said, they basically pulled the funding back by over half for that hospital. But then they contacted us and said, last shot. We would like y'all to come in and work with us, and see if we can't get this hospital turned around and also remain viable. And what's important to me about that is, there's a couple of things. One is, if you look where Eron, Tennessee, and Houston County is located, they service the southwest corner of Montgomery County, Stewart County, which has no healthcare in it, and then they actually are pulling over from the Henry County area as well. So they're kind of in a unique situation, and they service one of the larger nursing homes, and signature nursing home that's sitting there in Eron, Tennessee as well. If you just step back out of business and everything else, and you just look at the healthcare delivery model, and the delivery of health, you need these little hub hospitals that are right there to provide basic levels of care. You need an emergency department, you need someone that can handle pneumonia patients that are coming out of these nursing homes and these types of things. And so while I would love to put a billboard up right there across the street from this hospital and go, no, just come on to Northcrest, what we really do understand is that you've got to offer services there, because you can save lives in that facility. Now, I don't know if we can turn them around. I really don't. But, we've talked to the leadership team, and I pitched it to them, and said, what are your thoughts? And I can tell you that 100% of the managers, directors, and vice presidents, and me within this organization, said, yeah, let's go give it a shot. Let's go see if we can help the hospital. And so, we have gone out to Houston County. We're not making any money off of it. They've agreed to just offset any expenses that we have to come out there and work with them, and try and get the hospital turned around. And so, it's interesting, it's a small community. Immediately, you know, we had to combat the very first headline that comes out, is, well, Northcrest Medical Center is buying Houston County Hospital. No, it's not. And, and so we're having to kind of go through those. And then, of course, we sat down and said, well, we might have to look at this, and might have to look at that. So the next headline is, is, "Northcrest Medical Center is going to close all inpatient services." No, it's not. You know, so, there's a lot of rumors and everything that are going on out there. What we're looking at for that hospital is trying to determine where it fits, where it works, and what level of care needs to be given. I can promise you, they're going to have outpatient, and they're going to have ED, and you have to have inpatient care. Otherwise, as Medicare very quickly alerted me, you have to have inpatient care, or you don't meet the definition of a hospital. So, we're going to be out there working with them. So if you hear about them, if you just see it, some of the newspapers, you know, they'll like to pick up articles, so they'll, it'll be written in Houston County and be kind of not exactly 100% accurate, but then it'll get picked up at Robertson County Times, and then that gets run in the Tennesseean, and then my dad lives in Franklin, and he calls me because he's read the Saturday Tennesseean, and goes, hey, man, what are you doing in Houston County? I'm like, yeah. So, you know how it goes. But that, that is what we're doing. We are providing staffing, resources, services, really from a management level, not all the way down to brass tacks, so to speak, to try and work with that hospital. So again, it's an opportunity that's presented, some of it is just that we're in healthcare, and I think it's the right thing to do, because that's what we say that we want to do here, is just do the right thing always. The other is, yes, there is a business need that could be had there. It does, there are patients already coming from that area. And so, I would rather get good emergency care that's consistent with what we do here, if you're going to drive all the way across three counties to get to us anyway. So, so there's, there's a lot of that work in there. So if you hear anything about it, that's what we're doing. It's really no more, no less than that. But feel free, if you hear somebody saying that we're buying a hospital in Houston County, come talk to me, because I can promise you that we're not. All right? So those are the two things I wanted to talk to you all about. With that said, I'll turn it over to the, to the rest of the fun people here, and maybe I promise, no jokes.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If you'll be, if you have, this is going to be one story to two story-wise.
Just one story. And what we're doing is, what you'll see from the building layout, is that every single classroom has an exit door. So it's all one level. It's, it's two hallways that go down, kind of in a U. Every classroom is on an exterior wall with an exit door out, and that's for safety purposes. All right? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Angie Beard. I'm the Chief Nursing Officer and Chief Clinical Officer. Now, when you come in the, when you come in the front doors, they're in the lobby, you see the huge pillars. Some of this, you, some of you already know this, for some others of you, you haven't heard this. So it's kind of new, so bear with me for just a moment. When you come into the lobby, there's the huge pillars, and those are the pillars of excellence. So, we take those pillars every year, and there's five pillars, and we develop goals underneath those. So Mr. Davis has a set of goals, and then that rolls down to the vice presidents, and that rolls down to the directors, and then to the managers, and then down to the staff level. So that we all have the same goals circling around the pillars of excellence. So as we just finished up the end of the year, on June 30th, we would like to show you how we felt, how we ended the year, under each one of those pillars, and each one of the goals that are under those pillars. There's a little bit of lag time in some of these, because we wait for reporting to come out, we have to wait for other reports to come out, so that we can use those as a comparison. Okay? So let's get started. So, this is exactly the system that we use, it's computer-based. This is Mr. Davis's, as you can see up here. So this is under the people pillar. And you can see how many years we've been doing this. This is the people pillar. So our goal was to decrease total employee turnover to 12% with a stretch goal of 10%. And where did we fall in that? Oh my gosh. We ended up with 18.1 as our final turnover. With 18.1, that gave us a, that put us here in the, in the 2 category, as 18.1. So out of a score of 1 to 5, we scored a 2 on employee turnover. Does that make sense? Are y'all with me? Okay. Let's look at the next one. The next pillar is service. So we have ambulatory surgery. Ambulatory surgery, our goal was to have patient satisfaction in the 80th percentile with a stretch goal of 90th percentile. How we ended up the year was at 88th percentile, and that gave us a 4. Any questions on that? So we exceeded, we exceeded the goal, but we didn't quite meet the stretch goal. Okay, let's look at ED satisfaction. That was, once again, 80th percentile with a stretch goal of 90th percentile. We ended up the year on a 70. A 70 gave us, well, it was actually 69.8, so the system rounded it to 70. And so that gave us a 1, a 1, because we fell below 74 on ER satisfaction. So we've got some action plans and things, some work to do on that. Outpatient satisfaction, we also felt same goal, same goal, but we also fell in the 88th percentile here also, and that gave us a 4. So those are under our service pillar. Now let's look at our quality pillar. And this is what Mr. Davis was talking about. Now, this was the HAI, so that's Health Associated Infections, or Healthcare Acquired Infections. A rate of 5% from previous year, so it was to decrease the rate of infections by 5% with a stretch goal of 10%, and that's for quality, which is catheter-associated UTI, surgical site infection, CDIF, and VRE, for those four categories. So you kind of have to look at, this was a little different, because you can't do, we didn't do raw numbers. So quality, so the catheter-associated UTIs, the goal was .73. We actually ended up at .34, so there was a .53. SSI, .62, we end, was the goal, we ended up at .31, or that was what was the goal. And then we ended up at .31, so we cut surgical site infections by one half. Then CDIF, we actually went up a little bit. And then VRE, we actually went up a little bit. But overall, the 2015 average healthcare-acquired infection actual rate was .52. In 2016, the rate was .35%, so there was a reduction of 27%. So 27% reduction of health-acquired infections. Wow. So that gave us a 5. So next is HCAPs. Let's look at the goal for HCAPs. HCAPs was to increase HCAP scores to a cumulative percent variation from the national average of 1% with a stretch goal of 10% as measured by Press Ganey. So what does all that mean? That means that we want it to be at 1% or better than nation. So we want to compare ourselves against the national average. How we ended up with that, is we ended up at 5% above national average, and a 5 gave us a 4, a score of 4. So we were 5% better on our HCAP scores than nation. Wow. That's one we struggled with for a long time. We've struggled with this, with this score for years. Core measures, we have not finished that one out yet, because we do not have, it's against the nation also, if you see here in our goal. It's how we compare against the nation. We know how we did, but we don't know how the nation did. And we have to wait for those numbers to be publicized, so that we can do a comparison of how we ranked against the nation. As soon as we get those numbers, we'll populate that also. And then readmissions. It was, achieved 30-day readmission rate of 1% of national average, as reported on the Pepper Report, with a stretch goal of .5%. So, this one, this one comes from, this comparison of ours, look at this. For readmissions to the hospital or elsewhere, we are 4.2% better than the national top 80th percentile. That was how we ended up in the last quarter. 80th percentile. First quarter, we performed a little over the national 80th percentile. Through the efforts of the readmission CUS team, remember, we've talked about CUS teams before in here, we outperformed the nation for the second and third and fourth quarters. And this data is collected by Medicare claims to the same hospital or elsewhere, except for patients remitted to this hospital or another hospital. That claim all goes to Medicare, and then Medicare reports that. So it's not just us sitting there figuring out, did this patient come back in? That comes from claims data from Medicare. So this is... And it's reportable readmissions per the CMS guidelines are pneumonia, CHF, AMI, COPD, and total joint complications. So those are all the diagnoses that count in readmissions. So, so if you have CHF or COPD, and you're discharged, and then you break your leg, and you're back in the hospital with the 30 days, what happens? That's a readmission. That's a penalty for readmission. So we exceeded the national average, and how we ended up on that was a 5. So we exceeded our, our goals as well. So that concludes my portion of the people, service, and quality pillars. Do you all have any questions? Do you need me to explain anything in more detail?
So overall, the good outweighs bad.
Overall, this is, this is the best year we've had since we started back in 2000, but we can look up here and tell. Kim, I'm just going to warn you, it's really hard to maneuver the fingers. 2011, 2011 is when we started, and this year, this is the best year that we've had. Now let's talk about goals for next year. So we've already set the goals for next year, because all of our goals rose up into Mr. Davis's goals, as I explained earlier. So all of the goals will remain the same, because we think that they are good goals, and we think they're achievable goals, but they're not easy. It's a lot of work to get there and to maintain as well. The only goal that changed was the turnover goal. Turnover has become, is, the rate of that nationwide has increased. So we adjusted the rate on our LPS scores to be reflective of national averages. Okay? That's the only goal that has changed. The rest of these goals will remain the same. So, so that's why we have all of these projects and everything going, and this is how we measure our success.
You're telling us the scale should be there. So the performance of this year is now...
Well, you go ahead. No. Right. So how, so the goal won't be the same such as HAI. We cut that, so we cut that rate, say, in half. That was our goal. We cut that rate in half, so what will happen next year is, it'll be a half of a half. You see what I'm saying? Every time we, every time we go up, if we're the best, we have to compare against ourselves also, as well as the nation. So we have to have a reduction. And then that scale will reflect, the scale will reflect for next year, how, based off of a percentage of this year. Does that make sense? So if we had four infections, we want to cut it by two, we want to cut it, cut it by half, we want to cut it to two. And then the next year, we'd want to cut it to one, until we get to zero. So, it's not the same goal and same number. We drive that number down every time.
My name is Kim Bridgen. I am your CFO. And let's talk about how we did for last year. Let's see if I can do as well as Angie did. You might know what an operating margin is? Oh, good, my job's safe. Thank you. Operating margin, okay, we talk about operations. Operations are what we do, what we, what we're here for, we're here, we're a hospital. Operation margin then looks at the revenue that you bring in. Now what do we consider revenue? Are y'all asleep like we are? Revenue. Well, we charge our patients, less what our contract is with our insurance companies equals our net revenue. We take that, because that's actually going to turn into cash, we take that amount, and then less all our expenses, our operating expenses, which are us, supplies, utilities, insurance, all those things. So our net revenue, less all our expenses, gives us an operating margin. How much money do we have left over? So you take that, and then you apply it as a percentage. This is where we ended up for the year, because it's a rolling year-to-date number. You can see how we rolled, kept rolling and adding and adding. So for our 12th month, we were at 14.8. This is where a high number is a good number. What did we get? We got a 5. Great job, everybody. Very good job. So the next one we look at is productivity. Y'all can tell me what productivity is, right? Mm-hmm. So we look at all. We look at our salaries, we look at our contract labor, and all the benefits. Because a person is not just what you pay an hourly rate, is it? The whole cost of the person is what? Insurance, your PTO, all the workers' comp, all that goes into the cost of having a person. Some people are really, really expensive. Like Betty. But we look at all of that, because that measures how well you're staffing versus the volumes that are coming in the hospital. Because we're a hospital, we have flex, don't we? Not fun, but that's what we have to do to kind of mirror that volume. This is what we do with productivity. Our productivity, as a percentage of our net revenue, was, ended up with 2.1. They gave us a 4 based on our compared to budget. Thank you. Compared to budget. I don't have my glasses on, so I really can't see, so I may am winging this. So compared to budget, that's where we were, 2.1. We look at growth then, as revenue. We look at it through revenue, not per clicks, like per visits or per ED visits. We actually look at it from a revenue standpoint. Here, we're looking at outpatient revenue excluding ED and ops, because we like to measure those a little differently. So if you think of everything else that's not ED and ops, what would that be? Sorry? No? I'm sorry. Good answer, but not appropriate to this one, because I'm looking at outpatient. What would be an outpatient service line? Surgery? Radiology? X-ray? Labs? All right, now we're going. Now we got it. We're measuring everything here, from a net revenue standpoint. When we compare to budget, we're at 14, 4.1% over budget. That earned us a 5. So yay, us. Now here, we look at total net patient revenue, all volumes. Inpatient, outpatient, doesn't matter what we do, but we look at net patient revenue. Now why do we look at net patient revenue? Oh, come on, y'all are going. Come on, why do we look at net patient revenue? Why would we not just look at gross charges? Do we really get that? No, because we have contractuals, you know, Medicaid pays us 2 cents on the dollar, so you know, you have to factor all that in, of what we're actually going to receive in cash. Because what is, cash is what? King. Cash is king. We made it to our cash value. So here, when we look at budget, we ended up, can y'all read that? What does that say? 5.7, 5.7. You think that's a good number? 5.7 above budget. That's not just a good number, that's a what number? Awesome. That is an awesome number. Wake up, team! So because of that, guess what we got? We got 5. I like 5s. We got 5. I like 5s. So you're proud of yourselves? Can we say we did a good job last year? Yeah, we can. Yeah, we can. That's why people are calling, saying, can you do that at our place? Any question on finances? None? You gonna let me get off that easy? Afraid I'll ask a question again, aren't you? So our goals are the same, except of course, our budget changes. So therefore, our percentages are going to change. But the overall structure of the goal is the same. We've just changed our, our percentage, as you will, because the budget changed, to kind of roll with these kind of numbers. You know, we did it once, we're going to do it again, aren't we? We're that kind of team, aren't we? So thank you for all your hard work this past year. Let's do it again. So next year, I can talk about all our 5s again.